Okay, welcome everyone that's joined us here in council chambers this evening, as well as those that may be viewing from home. We've just completed a work session on the budget, but now it's time for the regular meeting, and this is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, April 27, 2015. I'll call that meeting to order and ask that all please rise while we have an invocation, and I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the many blessings that we as a city have received. We ask that you grant a portion of your wisdom tonight as we deliberate the issues that concern our citizens the most, and help to lead our city in a positive manner throughout the coming years. We ask for your presence be felt, that it be felt by those who serve our military in foreign lands, for their families that serve while staying behind, for our public safety officers who today take, probably are looking too much into their daily decisions. Help them all to come to peace with that, help all that are concerned about our public safety officials to come to peace with that, and for us to gather close around those who serve us in our police and fire departments. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, it's one of those great nights, and it's always been a great time to be the mayor of the city of Pecosin because of the people within the city of Pecosin and the things that they do for us. Tonight, we're going to recognize three awards. The first is a recognition and commendation of the Child Development Resources. And to accept this proclamation, I'd like to invite Mr. Von Poller, the board chairman, and Mr. Paul Scott, the executive director, to join me. Thank you both. And I'll let you hold that while I talk about it just a little bit. The proclamation is quite lengthy this evening, so instead of reading it, I think the thing that I want everybody to know is something about the Child Development Resources. This is their 50th year of helping children with disabilities and developmental delays to become the very best that they can be. This organization was founded in 1965 as the Williamsburg Preschool for Special Children. Today, the CDR provides services to nearly 1,000 children, ages newborn to three. In 1995, they opened a new facility in Norridge, and they have set sites on the Griffin Yates Learning Center and Lafayette High School. They have sites there. The honors received are Communities of Excellence Award for Blended Service. It offers to infants, toddlers, and their families. Healthcare Hero Award from the Williamsburg Community Health Foundation. The Carol S. Fox Making Kids Count Award from the Voices for Virginia's Children's Organization. Therefore, the city of Pecosin and our council hereby congratulates the Child Development Resources Incorporated on their 50th anniversary and their commitment on behalf of young children with disabilities or developmental delays, and the training offered to education and mental health professionals. With that said, I'll offer you all the microphone if you would like to speak at all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm Paul Scott. I'm the executive director of Child Development Resources, and Von Poller is the chair of our board. I just wanted to say thank you to the city of Pecosin. Anybody watching at home may not be aware that Child Development Resources does, or CDR for short, we provide services to families in Pecosin. If you have any questions at all about your infant or toddler or young child's development, any concerns or questions, you can call us at 757-566-TOTS, which is 8687. And developmental screenings are free. There never, no families are ever charged for that. Services are never denied for anybody's inability to pay. And we believe that if a child has a delay in any area, that we want to get started on correcting that as soon as we can. And services are provided in the child's natural environment. Typically, that means at home. Our staff are licensed by the state of Virginia to provide speech therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and special education. And they're also available to come to our developmental playgroup, which is in Norridge, is one of the few services we actually provide in a facility outside of families' homes. So if any of you that know families that have young children, or moms that are expecting, please let them know that we're here for them. And we just want to thank the city of Pecosin for all your support, and we invite you to our community event where we will kick off this 50th year on September 20, from 1:00 to 4:00. If, I'll be writing to the clerks and to the board individually, and I've got some materials here available. But on September 20, it's a Sunday afternoon, we're going to celebrate the beginning of our 50th anniversary, and we really appreciate the city of Pecosin and the community's support for everything that we do. So thank you so much for all that.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Okay. The second one of these awards this evening is a certificate of appreciation to Manfred Freeman. So Manfred, would you join me up here? Manfred has been a great supporter of the city of Pecosin through his services in economic development. I will tell you that I believe, if I am not mistaken, that you were one of the first people that we thought of to put on the Economic Development Authority. And so this evening, we're going to, with a sad heart, basically thank you for your service, and to basically say, what other community board do you want to serve on? Because we don't let people go easily, as you know, and no good deed goes unpunished. So, but no, tonight, in all honesty, my personal thanks to Manfred C. Freeman, or Manfred as I call him. He's led us and led the city into someplace that we have really just starting to scratch the surface on, and that is in economic development. And that has been a long journey for the city, who came out of nowhere with basically thinking they had little to offer. Manfred helped us see what we did have to offer, helped us tie all that together, and helped us to put forth projects like folks are going to see in the coming weeks in the Big Woods and other locations within the city. He's always been a champion for us, and we greatly appreciate your service on this board. And so this certificate of appreciation is presented to you in recognition for your outstanding service and contributions to the city of Pecosin while serving as the chairman of the Pecosin Economic Development Authority from its inception in March of 1999 until March of 2015. And we thank you so much for your service.
We were short, but I do miss it already. I told charity a minute ago. So one of these days, I may be back. But right now, after 16 years, I thought it was time for me, as chairman, to step aside and let some others. We've got as good a board as we've ever had. We've got some very talented people on the board, very smart. They're very diversified, and I think that the chairmanship has now gone to Donald Boo and Tim Trant, vice chair, very, very smart people, and they will carry on what we started. And I've been very proud to have started this back 16 years ago, and what we've accomplished is just in the beginning, as Gene said. And I think we've got a good way to go. And we've got a good staff, and a lot of people that's working hard to make this work for the city of Pecosin. So I thank you all for this, and I appreciate it being born and raised in Pecosin, grandparents born and raised in Pecosin. It's where my heart is and where I've donated my time. And if they need it, I'll be available again. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, I'm going to give, I'm going to ask Theresa to come up and join me. And this is in regards to probably one of the most important things that the citizens can count on. We are again in receipt, and again means probably for the 20th to 25th year, but it's never a small award. And that's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And I have said probably every year, I get on my soapbox and I say, it is so important when you're making decisions about the future of the city, to trust the data and to trust the numbers that you're dealing with. And I will tell you that many cities, that a lot of people probably take that for granted. And I will tell you, when you look at some of the cities that have fallen on bad financial times, that have actually declared bankruptcy, they've probably done that because their records, they don't know where they are, and they don't know where they're heading. And so what I would tell you is that this is one of the, basically the backbone of this city, is our financial stability. Theresa, it's with great honor that I give you this certificate, because you and your staff are the main ones that produce this product. And I will tell you also, and I'll give you that before I give you this, and just to let you know that since no good deed goes unpunished, I will tell you this time again for the mayor's blood drive. And I'm hoping that again, you will head that up for us.
That's what you're talking about.
Would you like to speak? Thank your staff for anything. With all that said, we do have some new employees here this evening, and Randy, would you like to introduce them?
My pleasure, sir. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, folks at home and in the audience, it's a pleasure to introduce two new members of the fire department to you. We'll do them in order they're done here. Emily Sissel, she'll come up, and behind her, go ahead and come up, Andrew, is Andrew Hurd. Both recently joined the fire department. Please come to, right there. Introduce yourself.
Tell us where you're coming from, your life history, and who you're related to.
Those are not the questions.
Oh, okay, all right. Feel free.
My name is Emily Sissel. I'm a paramedic, formerly from Montez, Virginia. For the last two years, I've lived down in Norfolk, volunteered with Virginia DMS for the past two years as a paramedic. I work in the E R at Children's Hospital, the King's Daughters, as a tech. I'm not a firefighter yet, but that will be taken care of this summer. I'm looking forward to going through Fire Academy and continuing to serve. Just in a great week so far, finish my first cycle. So looking forward to finishing serving as a citizen. Everything else I know.
Great. We are happy to have you here, and I think you'll find, just like those guys down in the fire department, you know, we all will see you probably on a fairly regular basis. Especially Kerry, he comes down there for free coffee all the time.
Come to his house.
Thank you for your service and that you will provide, and it sounds like a great fit. So thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Hurd. I've been a D M T for five and a half years now. I've been volunteering over in Gloucester County for three and a half years as a D M T firefighter. I'm looking forward to starting out a great career here with the city of Pecosin.
We look forward to having you. And again, the welcome, you know, the greatest thing that I heard out of both of you is that you're not new to the trade, and that you basically know what it's all about. And we certainly know what it's all about down here, and we're very proud of our police and our fire department. So thank you all for coming to work with us. We look forward to serving with you as we serve the citizens of Pecosin, and look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors, and this is the time for anyone to speak to council on any subject. I know we have two public hearings. If you're here to talk about the conditional use permit on Ren's Road or the budget itself, you may want to wait until the budget is talked about. But if anyone else that would like to speak to council on any issue at this time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session of March 23, 2015.
Second. Motion made and seconded that we have approved the minutes of the regular session. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and the work session?
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the work session of March 23, 2015.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve those minutes as well. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, and we'll move on into the public hearing section of the agenda. And the first public hearing is concerning a conditional use permit amendment to allow additional expansion of an existing mobile home park at 105 Ren's Road. Please go ahead.
Kevin.
Kevin, stop, sir. Welcome. We look forward to hearing from you on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and honorable members of council. The city has been approached by the owners of White House Cove from Marina to request a conditional use permit amendment, because as you may recall, about 15 months ago, January 27, to be exact, the owners received a conditional use permit for the creation of 12 new lots, which would ultimately result in 11 additional lots, because one was canceled out there with the expansion on the property. The owners are requesting to amend this use permit that they received last year with the creation of 12 additional lots. This expansion would raise the total number of lots on the property from 61 to 73 total. They started with 50. This is an aerial of the property. You can see it opens up to White House Cove there at the end of Ren's Road. The property is split zoned presently. You can see the red there. That represents B2, which is our business commercial district, which is primarily along With Creek Road, and the brown there, which is R3, an area which Mobile Home Park would be permitted as its high-density residential use. Here's the schematic provided to us by the property owners. The storage yard, which is approximately three acres in size, would be utilized to house this expansion. No additional ingress egress point would be off of Ren's Road. They would actually create an internal loop that would connect you to right around where the bait and tackle shop is on the site. Here are some pictures. This is the current ingress egress to the storage yard area. This point of access would be eliminated, and you can see where the left-hand side, there were a few of the boats are. That would be about the area where the new loop would be created for access to this new section. This is from Ren's Road, actually, and you can see there's some vegetation there, a little thin now, but still, looking into the storage yard from Ren's Road, you can see the bathroom building in the back there, at least the roof behind a camper. This is actually in the cul-de-sac at the end of Ren's Road, looking onto the property. Once again, you can see the bathroom in the background there. This is from the surf rider parking lot, looking towards the bathroom, and you can see the storage yard in the rear there. This is actually their new area of expansion, the one that they received approval on. You can see some of the units going in now. They still have some of the lots available there, but this is what we anticipate the new expansion to look like. And this is actually coming from the intersection, very close to Ren's Road, not quite at the intersection point, but looking towards the storage yard from that perspective. Staff has proposed amending just two of the conditions. The first, which would regulate this specific area by allowing no more than 12 additional lots, which are located within the storage yard area currently bound by Ren's Road to the east and south, the pool area, bathrooms, and parking area to the west, and the ingress egress to the site of the terminus of Ren's Road to the north. And the second, which would be condition five, minor modification there, just changing the word section to sections to note that there have been multiple expansions at this point. The Planning Commission met to consider this item at their meeting last Monday, April 20, and have recommended its approval to you all by a vote of six to zero. So with that being said, I can answer any questions you may have about this application. Additionally, the property owner is here to speak on behalf.
Questions of council, Kevin?
I have one. What is the, those lot sizes as compared to what you currently have? How similar are they?
The new section that we put in, the home lot sizes are roughly double the size, because they comply with the new city ordinance, the D C code site plan requirements.
Thank you.
I have a question. I can't, I can't tell by the picture there, the lights are glaring a bit, but there was a tenanted area like that, at least during one of the events down there, there was some conversation that that area could be used for weddings and special events down there at the marina, and maybe even, there you go. Rent it out for special events that take place down there. You've done a number of them down there, and that?
Yes, sir.
In the past, it's been really nice. Will these new lots take up that space?
The answer, Kevin, if you don't mind going back to the site plan, I can kind of talk through. One of the good things about the new, when you do something on the new site plan, you're actually required to have open spaces, green areas. And so if you see in this area here, we've actually enlarged the green area to the right of the pool. It's fairly large, it's about 5,000 square feet. And then as well with the site plan, we're actually doubling the paved parking for the surf rider area. And so that area where Kevin's highlighting there now, we will actually be able to set the tent up in the paved parking area, like they do a blue water yacht in other marinas. And so instead of walking on gravel, you'll be on a solid surface. As well as, there's also a green area, open space at the, Kevin, if you can point it out, kind of between the dare yacht sales, which will stay in our marina office, and then the marina store, if you go up into the right, there's a green area there as well. And so we're going to utilize those areas for the, kind of the special event situation. Plus, in the existing section, there's actually a large green area in the center of all the existing lots. So we're allocating for that for the future as well. So the answer is yes. We'll continue to have events. This summer, we're talking about doing a fishing tournament, but instead of having it just in August for cobia, we're looking to do a series like June, July, and August, where you'll also pick up species like flounder, spot croaker, so you can get kids involved. And instead of having one big event, have a vent that hits each month of the summer to drive traffic to the property.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, I guess, for Kevin. Our sewer and roads can handle the additional 12 units that's been looked at, and we're sure of that?
We're not sure of that now. We anticipate that's not going to be an issue, but we will visit those during site plan approval.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions from Mr. Brown. Where will the, there's currently, I drove by the other night to have a look, there's currently a lot of boats being stored there. Where will they go?
There's two other properties in the city that offer the same service, the Moors Marina across the creek. They have the same rate we have, and as well as at Messick Point, there's another facility there, and then also Pecosin self-storage. We had the question from Planning Commission, do we have enough spots to take care of our existing homeowners or boat slips? We roughly have five or six folks who live at the marina that have something in the storage yard. So out of the 35 to 40 tenants that we have on an annual basis, a very small percentage that's homeowners, and so we're going to make provisions to make sure if they have, say, a trailer for their jet ski, that we have a parking spot for them to offer that. But the answer to your question is, those folks will go to another facility within the city of Pecosin.
So you're wanting to get out of the dry storage?
Yeah, yeah. You know, if you look back at the pictures, the dry storage used to be one of the best-looking things down there, but with everything else we've done, it's not, long-term, in our opinion, the best use for the property.
And I guess my other two questions are for Kevin. Can you explain to the public why a conditional use permit is required for this?
Yes. In accordance with Article 13 of the city zoning ordinance, the establishment of mobile home parks require a conditional use permit, provided they meet very specific criteria set forth within this ordinance. And this proposal certainly meets, at least at this point during the cursory review, seems to meet all those criteria within Article 13. But that's why we're here tonight. That's why we were here last January. And I'm sorry, what was the?
That was my first question. So to follow that up, so this is not beyond the eight per acre density?
No, this, high-density resi, let me see.
I thought it was going to make it 12. I thought I, maybe I misread.
No, 12 is the units per acre that's typically allowed within the high-density districts in the city. I believe you are correct with eight units per, within the mobile home parks, but I do not believe we've run those figures yet.
The zoning on our property was for eight units per acre for the whole site. That would put you close to 100 units, and so we're ending up at 73.
Yeah, to put that in perspective.
We're well under, we're in effect 75% of what would be allowed by right.
By right, you're allowed 100.
Just doing it off the cusp. The property is about 14 and a half acres, and this would be at 73 units.
And I have actually two more questions. The original, you know, 15 years ago, there was a mobile home park there. That only had about 50 homes, am I right?
Yes.
But it was on a much smaller acreage.
Yeah, several parts were added to this parcel after the fact. For instance, the Wilson track, which was considered on January of 14, at that point was a separate piece, and that has been added. Other parts have been added to this parcel as well.
Do you know the numbers on what that acreage was?
The Wilson property is around two acres total, and we, that was a net increase of 11 units, so it was well under the density allowed as well.
Okay, and my final question was paving and tree removal, they're supposed to be, if it's within the 50 feet of the water, is that going to be a problem? Is that going to affect any of the trees? Are you going to leave the trees that are already there?
Ren's Road is a 50-foot right-of-way, so if you look at the distance from the water to our property, and actually, to go to your point of green area, there's a 25-foot setback from the homes to Ren's Road, so there'll actually be a major increase in green area, because you'll have a 25-foot area that'll be grass and landscaped all. Our intention is to landscape that area to where when you drive down Ren's Road, it becomes a amenity, where you have some of the sea grasses, the crepe myrtles, but we'll work with the city staff, put our landscape architect in touch with them to make sure it's all done properly.
And then I guess my final question for you, Mr. Brown, is pavement, pervious versus impervious. I know that that was a big question when you first started putting things in there, and while pervious is much nicer to walk on when you're wearing heels and stuff, I thought that impervious, you had chosen that, and now you're saying that you're going to be paving the gravel area that existed?
Actually, a lot of, there's a huge increase of green area on this plan. So impervious is stuff that's hard, that water can't go through, and so gravel actually is treated by the state of Virginia as totally impervious.
Right.
So environmentally, we'll actually be increasing the benefits to the bay, and so it'll help all our stormwater issues, because...
By paving?
We're taking a lot of the existing stone area and turning it into grass. The whole area that you see there to the right of the pool and where all the homes are, it's all gravel now. It's all 100% impervious.
Pervious or impervious?
Impervious, which means it's gravel.
Okay, it is paved, okay.
Yes. And so it's a huge net benefit.
And that's something that the city's development review committee would look at, too, during the site plan approval process. We'll have to look at all environmental features there. But this is a redevelopment of a site as well, and a lot of impervious area, the gravel that's within that storage area, would be eliminated. And we'd end up with a net gain of landscaping.
Kevin, one other question. You say you haven't done the study yet for the sewage and utilities and roads and so forth. Should we approve this in the future? Will that survey have been done before final approval? So that we know that, so if we approve it, and then it turns out that it can't handle the increase, then does the development continue? the increase, then does the development continue?
Well, I don't want to speak to utilities specifically, whether it can handle that or not. There's a city pump station literally adjacent to the site. The traffic, do not anticipate that being an issue at all. But it does have access, immediate access to all those required utilities, and that's what we really look at at this stage. During the site plan approval, very standard, at that point, you would look into more of outside of availability, whether it's feasible, and whether the system can, can handle the additional improvements.
Does that pump station often have problems?
I can't speak to that.
I can speak. We've had our engineers who've handled the whole project, including the surf rider, look at things. There's nothing to believe that there's going to be an issue with the city pump station. If you look back at the history, all the old terracotta sewer pipes that were in the ground, when we replaced those, all the runtime cycles all decreased on that pump station. All the work we've done down there has only helped the pump station situation. And so there are utility engineers that go to school for this thing. They'll review everything, they submit the paperwork, just like they did on the last expansion. The city's engineer reviews it, and the project, you won't like, get site plan approval if it doesn't work. And so that's the next step though. It's about $40,000 to do the site plan, so that's why this is the first step.
Okay, just so we're all on the same page, I got, going back on the history of the property, when you, when you brought us a plan together years ago for condominiums, do you remember how many condominiums you had?
135.
Okay, and there was a traffic study with those, and yeah, you're at 70 homes. Okay, so I would say that we're, we're probably within the realm of what we think. I'd have preferred to have the condominiums, but this is a distant second choice, and it sounds to me like you're meeting all the requirements to expand the use. So with that said, any other questions, the council?
I have a question. And it's really not relevant to whether or not we approve this or not, but you graciously allow the sailing team and the city, this summer is going to run a feeder program for that.
Yes, sir.
Sailing lessons for small kids. This is going to displace that. Do you have any plans for it?
I don't want to contradict what you just said, but the sailing team, I pulled it up online today just to double check, the program that is June and July for Parks and Rec. The earliest this construction would start because of the site plan process would be probably in August. It may not start until September, October. We have been a huge proponent of the sailing team and the whole sailing program. We've worked with the city manager, with the city staff to push this along. We are strongly encouraging the sailing team and the Parks and Rec folks, assuming things go well this summer. And my nephew is in, has signed up for these lessons, they're, I think, almost sold out. We would like to see the sailing team get to the point in the program to have a floating dock adjacent to the city pier, which is what Hampton Yacht Club and the other true, in order to have a regatta where you can have schools come in here and compete to do that. So we're pushing to help make that happen, whether it's through fundraising, whether it's opportunity. I would say we will not do anything to kick the sailing team out. We all grew up sailing, we grew up on the water. Whether it's putting them in the parking spaces that are closer to the dock, whether it's putting them in the green area, we will work with Steve Hendrickson and their people to make it happen. It's about $40,000 for the floating dock, so we could all chip in, do a little fundraiser right here, and then they'd have a first-class situation. But I think that's where the sailing team's headed long-term, but we have to work things out with the city, whether it's an easement, whether it's the city owns the dock, there's operations, there's insurance, and so that's where it's headed. But we're very, very aware, Dare Yacht Sales is there, they're growing their present. Clint Brower, who's a Pocahontas resident, has taken over the marina store, he's growing his presence. When we pushed this forward, one of the first things we said was, we don't want to do anything to this key operator. Surf riders expanding, so part of this doubles their paved parking lot. We moved their dumpster to make it cleaner, more presentable, by making it a compactor versus solid waste. So we're very aware of those things. And frankly, those things are driving why, when you drive down there now and you look at the storage yard, it's just, it's just out of place. And the homeowners we're getting are great people, they treat it like their own, they love the water, we have retirees coming here, it's just working. So that's really what's pushing all this to happen. So everything, we have a big competitive advantage over these other communities who don't appreciate the waterfront. And so that's what, that's what we're pushing. So we appreciate y'all's support.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to follow up on one of Councilwoman Crawford's questions. It would be about 4.8 units per acre. Eight units per acre is the maximum allowed density for mobile home parks.
Okay, with no other questions, this is a public hearing, and I'll open that public hearing and ask for if anybody in the audience would like to speak on this subject. Okay, seeing no speakers, I will close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving an amendment to a conditional use permit to expand an existing mobile home park on undeveloped property located at 105 Ren's Road, identified as tax map number 12-01-00-0075.
Second.
Okay, is this a first reading, or is this?
This is a resolution, only with one.
Only one, okay. So this will be the final and last time we hear from this. Just making sure all the council understands that. All right, questions or concerns by council? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you very much. Next public hearing is the proposed 2015-2016 annual financial plan, otherwise known as the budget, the tax levies associated with that budget, and any fees. This is a first reading to this evening. I'm assuming Randy, you'll just give a brief overview since we just had the public hearing, I mean, the work session on it. And also, as you do that, if you would go through the cycle from here, when would be the second reading or final adoption?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I apologize, but you've heard all of this less than an hour ago. But for the benefit of those that may have joined us since the work session, the overall general fund budget is recommended to you at 26.84 billion, which is a slight decrease from last year's budget. The budget really represents our first fully post-recessionary budget and was specifically designed at my level to reflect living within our means and kind of our sense of where we are now. As such, there are no proposed changes to tax rates or fees of any kind. Of course, we remain fully consistent with your adopted fiscal management guidelines. This were the, that was the beacon that got us through the hard times, so we're going to remain steadfast with that. Overall, real property assessment has increased slightly, which is a change from previous years, but on average, the average property will increase by less than one-half of a percent. Our stability reserves remain intact. There is no new recommended debt associated with the budget, so again, designed to live within our means and to reflect what that would be like. Having said that, we've been able in this budget to recommend to you full funding of the school board's request for additional local funding, the amount of $140,000. Its purpose principally is to assist the school division and school board with providing a 2.5% pay increase for all division personnel. Additionally, there is a one-half of a percent compensation increase recommended for city employees. That is in addition to the 2% adjustment that was provided previously this calendar year. There is one position recommended for addition in the budget, that is on the fire department, first of what I hope to be a three-year journey towards adding eventually one operational person to each of our three operational shifts. That would be funded out of anticipated vacancy savings in the budget rather than requiring a new allocation of monies. There are a small number of projects recommended for use of one-time funds, that's funds that are not in the stability reserve and beyond our requirements for our fiscal management guidelines. Those projects include a bus, we've been trying to replace one bus a year, a police car, same thinking, and some limited money, $40,000, to assist engineering consulting work associated with the TMDL federal mandate. The CIP, as you recall, also has a dump truck proposed, and how we treated that for the purpose of the recommended budget was a recommendation that we wait until the budget year closes to make sure we really do have the money that we anticipate, and then at that point, bring it back to you for consideration. There's no pressing need that we've got to, we've got to bet on the come there, although we don't anticipate a problem. At that same time, we could pick up the conversation with Park's advisory board regarding their mobile restroom facilities. They continue to work on that, they're just not quite to full budget, so that would be a good time to also take that up. We do have in the budget some additional money in the amount of $250,000 budgeted for TMDL and stormwater work. Source of that is anticipated proceeds from the land sale, specifically the Big Woods land sale. One other thing as it relates to the CIP, and I'm about finished. The CIP also includes, for next year, $465,000 in state money for a combination of street paving and drainage projects, and that's really the highlights there.
Okay. Any questions on Randy's brief presentation?
Just a comment for, I guess, the third year in a row, I want to talk about the camping trailers and, or, how's it written? Camping trailers and motorhomes. We tax exempt all the boats, and I think it's kind of selective on recreational vehicles, as I said last year. And it's about $50,000 that we get for that, which maybe this year we can afford that loss, but I'd still like for us to look at that. We reduced the tax on the boats, the number of boats went down, so I don't know what effect it'd have on motorhomes.
Okay.
But wanted to bring it up again.
All right. Any other questions or concerns of council? Not, I'm going to proceed to the public hearing. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, and this is your chance, your opportunity to speak on the proposed budget. Again, the highlights of that, you know, it's basically a vanilla budget year, but I will tell you, and when I say vanilla, it's just not exciting, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't impact citizens in different, in different ways. I'm keenly aware of that, I'm sure council is keenly aware of that. We all, our houses and our most vital property assess or increase or decrease in their assessment, and so while we may say we're not changing the rate, that doesn't mean that individually everybody comes out the same. What that basically means is that our finances are steady and that our ability to lay that rate is based on a half a percent across the board. I will tell you that that's a mixed bag for people. For some citizens, that means that their house is decreased by a large amount. So while they may get a tax benefit of their decreasing value of real estate, I look at that as a different way. That's their primary investment, the primary thing that carries you forward. One of the main things that we take on is that we want to protect the value of your home. Others may have increased, and depending on whether your waterfront or you're in the desirable neighborhood or whatever, that's not, that's not within the realm of what council gets to do. But I'll tell you that I think about those people every day, because there are, there are winners and losers in every budget, and sometimes it's not as painless as it seems. So with that said, never, never think that I lose sight of that, or that this council loses sight of that. All right, with that said, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anybody would like to address council on any, on an issue pertaining to the budget. Okay, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. And there is no action on the budget tonight, did you cover the next step?
No, but I will right now, sir, if you'd like. Members of council, this, following the public hearing, this is considered, you're taking it as first read, which doesn't mean you're endorsing it, but for the purposes of first read you are. What we would do this evening, if there is direction that the council would like, either amendments to the recommended budget or anything other than a refinement to the add/delete list, if you could provide that guidance tonight as a council, we will reflect that in final resolutions and ordinances. And we are scheduled to come back next Tuesday, which is a, it's not our normal day, so we wanted to make sure that we were letting the public know about that. And that change, May 5th, will be the meeting at 7:00 in council chambers to consider adoption of the FY 2016 budget. Appreciate council's willingness to entertain a special meeting because of unavoidable conflict that I had.
Not that you had, that I had. I apologize for that, but thank you for taking that on. Carrie and I were both out of the, out of the state the last meeting, so that's why we're a little, put the rest of council behind the ball a little bit, and apologize for that.
Can I clarify that time? Did you say seven?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was earlier than that, it is seven, okay.
Okay, anything else on the budget from council? Okay, not hearing any change in direction, so I guess what I would like to say is, let's move on to new business. And the new business is basically sort of budget-related, and this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with the local choice for employee health and dental benefits and with the standard standalone dental insurance.
If you would also introduce or recognize the members of your selection committee that are here as well.
We had to bid out the health insurance contract, like we had talked about in the work session, and so we, we bid it out, we received a few health and dental, we received a couple dental only and a couple vision only. We also asked for a quote from the local choice, which is a program, a state-pooled program from a bigger pool. The committee, which included Robyn Bellamy, Robert Holloway, Steve Clark, and Debbie Veston, myself, met over about a six-week period several times to go over the benefits and to go over the coverage. The renewal for our current contract, which was a direct contract from Anthem, was about 9.3% increase in our health insurance coverage. The local choice, which is the pooled plan, came in at about a 9.9% decrease from our current rates. So we looked at those benefits and determined that the difference between, between the cost, the benefit of the reduction in cost and the change of benefits, it was better for the city. We recommended to city manager that we did change our, our program. One of the reasons why, there's actually two reasons why the local choice came in so much less. One of it is, is we've had some bad experience rates over the last few years, and so with a larger pool, we were able to get that experience rate down. Also, it's considered a self-insured plan, so some of the Affordable Care Act fees that would normally be paid with a, with a direct plan are not going to have to be paid, and that's about $74,000 that we are not going to have to pay. There is the local choice option, you have to have dental and health insurance together, so for the folks who we, who only have dental coverage, we had to go to another, another product, and the standard was able to give us a standalone dental program. It is more expensive than the dental program we have today because the pool of people are so much, so much less. So we, with, also with the, the local choice, there was change, a little few changes in benefits, and we talked about the rates being adjusted to the employees. So all employees with anyone that has dental coverage, anyone that has the health insurance coverage, everyone will see some type of decrease in their rates and their paychecks.
Okay, so what I, what I gathered out of that, and I'd be interested in one question after that, but what I gathered out of your, your statement there is that it's good for the city overall in its budget, and it's also a positive influence on our employees' paychecks?
Yes, every employee.
Okay, so everybody will receive some benefit. They'll be able to still use their existing doctors for 95% of the time?
Most of them, because the local choice is run by Anthem as well, a lot of the, a lot of the health insurance in the dental, Delta Dental is... lot of the health insurance in the dental, Delta Dental is the dental, and most, most of the, the doctors and dentists, and all the dentists here in Pecosa, I believe, are on that.
Yeah.
The, the standard has a less of, of availability, so there are some dentists that are not covered.
Okay, and then, last but not least, how's, how's this, and really the selection committee, because I know you, the, the one reason that you're on it is that, to communicate, and how's this been accepted by the employees?
I've heard very little. I know that I've heard very little from the employees, and I'm, I believe I've spoken to all the committee members, and I think pretty much, there's, there's some questions, but, but not in a negative-
You're never going to have a hundred percent, I, I understand that.
So, so you understand the process. The selection committee made its recommendations to me, then we met with all the department heads and constitutional officers, and we introduced it to them. As a group, they felt comfortable moving forward with the change, um, and at that point, we began to share information with the employees. The only, the only things that I've really heard have really related to standalone standard program, if in the end that, and, and we would have liked to have gone the other way if it was available option to us. If in the end standard is not the option for us, we'll seek another option, um, but that's all I've, that's all I've heard.
Okay, and as, the, the employees that would be wanting that are probably have, either were military, retired, or-
Have health insurance elsewhere.
Or health, health insurance elsewhere, right? And that's, but you, what you've done is made an arrangement to pick them up with, so there's no net loss of benefits.
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Questions of council? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this is a resolution to let city manager know where to proceed with this, so anybody willing to move this forward?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the Department of Human Resources Management of Commonwealth of Virginia Health Benefits Program.
Second. Okay, motion made, second, that we approve the resolution that allows the city manager to enter into those contracts. Questions of council, or questions or concerns of council? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Comments to the city manager in the room?
Uh, we have the resolution for the standard.
Oh, I'm sorry. That other resolution-
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the contract for dental insurance with the standard.
Second. The motion made, second, that we approve that resolution also. Questions or comments? Now, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Vicki, if you'll take that time off my, you know, I told you I'd get through this meeting quicker, but Judy keeps telling me I've got to vote on something. With that said, comments to the city manager, no pressure.
Not sure how to, I would limit my comments to one. I just wanted to remind council members and the public that the council is, is scheduled for its annual, more or less, retreat on Wednesday, May twentieth, at six-thirty PM at the community center on Odd Road, and the public is welcome to attend. That's all I have.
Very good. Southall.
What was that date again? May twentieth, sir.
May twentieth, seven. He said seven, right?
Six-thirty. According to what I've got written down, it says six-thirty.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Scott and Fowler for their award on the, being recognized for their fiftieth anniversary that's coming up, and for Mr. Manfred Freeman for his many years of service to the city, and thank you very much, Manfred. And to Teresa and staff for the excellent budget presentation that you, that you have done for us in the past, and to the city manager and staff for the budget that they have prepared. If I, if I remember my numbers correctly, uh, it's two hundred thousand dollars less than last year's budget, okay? And so while we're not increasing the total budget, we are decreasing the budget, okay? Unfortunately, we did have to spend more money than we intended to for, to support our schools, because the state will not, but that'll end my comments tonight, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Councilwoman Crawford.
I'd like to echo those thoughts, as well as congratulate the, I don't want to get the name wrong, but the Heart Chase Pecosa went very well on, on this past weekend. My son participated and had a great time. He said next year he knows what the strategy is that he needs to use to win. So, that was a good time, and to, for people to mark your calendars for May the sixteenth, the Comonos barbecue is gonna have, we're gonna have dinners out here again by, at Wells Fargo, so just get your appetites ready. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, I agree with what Tracy and Bud said, and then additionally, for our retreat, if we can discuss the trees going up and down Vic Creek, I'm not Vic Creek, With Creek, and if we need to replant all of them or parts of them, or, because right now, we've got the city manager on a directive that he's got to go by and plant trees, so we need to discuss that and put a little common sense into it, I think. And the second thing that, I don't know if you're going to bring it up, but the last time we talked about this, we talked about the TMDL running our budget up a bunch, and I think you said something about two hundred thousand, and you can elaborate on that later. But that's all I have.
Councilman Vernal.
Well, to echo what's been said about the, the high quality of the budget presentation, and the fact that it has been relatively painless compared to previous years, and just, I'm especially appreciative of the fact that we were able to fund the school budget. I know how difficult that's been for years, and I'm just glad that we were able to meet the, meet the request and that, that we'll keep our quality education on track.
Councilman Green?
Uh, just to thank the school board and the staff for a great budget process, very painless this time, and we appreciate that, but, uh, really do look forward to this being the norm from now on. Also, to echo what Carrie said about the trees, I've heard many, many comments, do not replant anything. Anything we plant there is going to spill over into the lane, block the view, and I've had a lot of comments from people saying that they really like the openness. The other thing is to remind everybody, the food bank is tomorrow at the old city hall from ten to one, and the Saint Timothy's Anglican Church is hosting it, so if you qualify, please come out.
Okay, Councilman Ayer.
With all the echo, and I feel like I'm in the Grand Canyon, but, echo, echo, everything everybody's saying, in addition to that, Emily and Andrew, welcome to the fire department. Also, when you opened the newspaper this past week, you got the advance drawing team in there, the choir, the chorus, all of them doing exceptionally good things in the name of Pecosa. The health insurance thing, I cannot just tell you how great that is, to be able to put money back in the pockets of people right now, because, you know, people are still having a rough go of it. The economy's making turns, I, I think we all see it making turns, but some folks are still having some tough times, and to be able to put money in people's pockets, not just a little bit of money, a good chunk of change, I think that's just fantastic. All you guys should be really proud of that, and that's all.
That's all I have, and I think y'all have said it all adequately, so I really won't even talk about TMDL, I'll save that for the night that we adopt the budget. But with that said, uh, let's see, no, nothing else to talk about, wow. All right, so we move to adjourn.
So, move.
Question made, second, that we adjourn this meeting. I won't even ask for questions or comments, Judy.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned.
You're under an hour and thirty seconds.